Good evening. Welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting for April 4th, 2018. This appeals hearing is being audio and video recorded per the open meeting laws in Massachusetts. I'd like to welcome again for the second week in a row Attorney Dave DeLuca. Appreciate you coming out.
Yep, glad to be here.
Again to us.
Glad to be here.
And with us is Bob Bullock, our building commissioner. Thank you, Bob. Tonight at 7:00, we have a 144 Seccong Street hearing, which has been moved up to 8:00 PM. So could I have a motion to continue the public hearing for 144 Seccong Street till 8:00 PM this evening?
I make a motion that we postpone the 7:00, 144 Seccong Street hearing to 8:00, same date and place.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Our next hearing this evening will be 82 North Street. Madora, would you please read the public notice?
Notice of public hearing for Ruth Palumbo at 7:15 PM for an appeal of the building commissioner/zoning enforcement officer's decision in accordance with Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 40A, Section 8, for the property addressed as 82 North Street, reference assessors MAP 21, Block 60, Lot 29, in the R2 zoning district.
Thank you very much. Bob, would you like to start us off with?
Sure. This is based on 82 North Street, the property. We've been going back and forth for a little over, close to two years now about property not being closed for approximately six years now. The water, again, was shut off four years ago. The buildings were in disrepair and we ended up going to District Court because we felt as though there was a hazard there. They had them remove the buildings. There was a couple of greenhouses, a few greenhouses, garage and where the storefront was. Those have been removed. Right now, I'm looking at the goodwill boxes and just basically that the business hasn't been there. You know, based on the bylaws, F3B, that non-conforming use that has been discontinued for two years has lost their grandfathering. So based on that, I've made the, I've asked them to cease any activities, which there are no activities. I just want the property cleaned up and brought back to a residential property. So that's kind of where it stands and they've appealed that decision back to you. We did go to court and the court asked me to send the letters out again and give them the ability to appeal the decision to the ZBA. So that's what we've done.
Okay. Can you move the microphone closer to you, Bob, so the audience can hear you?
Oh.
Okay. Attorney DeLuca, do you have anything to add to that at this time?
No, I can confirm that we were before the District Court on an enforcement action with respect to the buildings and the structures that were present upon the property. After several appearances, that case was dismissed with the, again, with the provision that this question of the goodwill donation boxes and whether or not that continued a, constituted a proper business use of the property, notwithstanding the fact that the rest of the business that had been conducted on the property has now obviously ceased and has been for some time. So it was the building inspector's judgment that as an accessory use to the ongoing business, that the donation boxes might have had a place, but now that the primary use of the property as a business has been extinguished, so too would the, would the use of the property for the purposes of hosting a donation box. So that was the question that was, rather than put that question to the District Court, it was preferred for your board to address that question to see, to determine whether or not, you know, Mr. Bullock's decision is sustainable and enforceable.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney DeLuca. And for the appellant is, go ahead, Ruth, is it? Could you introduce yourself?
My name is Ruth Palumbo. I represent the estate of Mary Bremmelt, my mother. I am her executor. 82 North Street, as you all know. My sister Rachel Bremmelt and myself, Ruth Palumbo, were named beneficiaries of the property in my mother's will. Actions were taken quite a long time before my mother passed away, as she just passed away last June. We had a pre-existing non-conforming lot prior to zone determination. My parents were there since 1948. At one time, we were the only gig in town, but as it became more apparent with Home Depot, Lowe's, and all the grocery stores selling flowers, we ran into some very stiff competition. Along with the stiff competition, we ran into our father passing away, who was our maintenance man. In 2004, we do go way back with Mr. Bullock, we're very good friends. 2004, he came to us and we had some things to comply with in the shop, such as the three-feet aisle, exit signs, et cetera, which we complied. Then in 2008, my mother fell. Her life alert went off. It's not an easy thing to say that your mother's a hoarder, but my mother was a hoarder and there was every right for the town to ask us to clean up the house before Mary could come home, which we did. We spent three straight months unhording my mother's house, my sister and I, and she did again come home. There came a time, however, when her health was so bad that she was bedridden and wearing diapers and she had to come to live with me. There wasn't enough business to sustain my sister having benefits, so I took an early retirement from Verizon. I worked for 32 years with them, took an early retirement. She came to my home in Franklin and she resided there until she passed away last year. We originally got a price when Mr. Bullock approached us about the buildings. We were very torn because it's our legacy. And the first price we got some years ago was $30,000 to do the demolition. And there were, at that time, one, two, three, four, five greenhouses and a garage. That's a lot of work, and a shop. So my son, Ronald, started with some of his friends and it was slow, but we were making progress because we didn't have $30,000, okay? We tried to, we were going to try to sell a top part of the land to the town. We had a proposal for the town of Norfolk to buy two and a half acres at the top part of 82 North Street. But then a constructive lien, which does not need a judge's approval, became, constructive trust, I believe it's called, lien, became on the property. So the deal we had with the town of Norfolk didn't happen. So thus, no money. We agreed to the removal. We got it down so far to $17,000. That's the amount we ended up spending because we found asbestos. So with all the reports and everything, we complied, but we were never, never really sure that we had lost our zoning. We wanted to bring the legacy back in a different capacity. We didn't want to have all those greenhouses. We didn't want to work as hard as our parents did. That was a lot of work for them. We wanted to do something more simple. We're putting a business plan together to have either community gardens for Norfolk or do a farm stand with flowers and not putting up any brand-new structures, but just to do like temporary tents and et cetera. So that was our way of carrying on the legacy, though we hope that you will allow us to keep our zoning. The boxes for donations have been there since 2004. We've been told by both companies, Planet Aid and Big Hearted Books and Clothing, that we are one of the best spots for donations. So we feel as though we're doing some help to the folks in town and the surrounding towns and we do get a pittance for having the boxes there. So we are getting, I think it's like six cents a pound for clothing. The wood box that I placed out in front, that I was also told to remove, was actually donations that I give to wounded warriors. My son-in-law is a wounded warrior, veteran, and I was selling wood for $20 a cube and I was donating it and I can prove that I have donation slips for that. It wasn't for the business, but it was something to help those that I felt very strongly about. Yes, the water got shut off, but my mother was out of the house, at my house. There wasn't any need to put it back on. We did some 503C work, King Philip Music. Rachel, one of the places?
503C.
Oh, yeah, King Philip Music Association, different events, the Spring Pops, the Winter Pops, their corsages and boutonnieres for their events for the seniors. I would do them, they would pick them up, I wouldn't deliver them. They would be kind of a donation from, from my heart, from the florist shop. Other organizations like garden clubs and whatnot, I would do demonstrations for under the name of Family Florist.
Going to be real quick tonight, too, just a couple more things. All our accounts are still open with all of our suppliers. Covicchio's, Base Date Flowers, what's the other one's name?
Fall River Florist.
Fall River Florist. We do have a Facebook page and we still have the original phone number from 1948 that is still under the family business name. So we are asking the board to give us some leniency to let us prove to you that we can be a small business in town like we have been since 1948. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you. What was the name of the florist?
Family Florist.
Family Florist.
It was also called Family Gardens and Greenhouses.
Okay. Okay. I'll open it up to the board with questions.
Yeah, I just, so, okay. So here we go. Now, to review, last time we spoke about this, so here I am, confused again now. So here we go. So we had, what is it, 62-64, is that correct?
82-84.
82-84. Okay. So you spoke very eloquently about the history of your property and so forth. And what is, what is the effect of 84 on your property? Because that's what we discussed last meeting.
I don't, I'm not sure that that's appropriate tonight.
Yeah, I think, 84 is, eighty, both are being looked at as, as non-conforming uses. So they're both applying separately for a non-conforming use.
Okay.
Appeal.
Okay. Understood.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Yep.
It is still just the one parcel, 82. And one other thing I forgot to mention, while we had been going to court quite faithfully, Mr. Peeny, who was the magistrate, actually came out and did a walk of the property, which was very nice of him. He's since retired, but he was assuring us this whole time, we were in court for like two and a half, three years, that we would not lose our zoning, so it's kind of a surprise to us.
Okay. Questions? Okay. I gotta, I'll start it off. You talked about your mother being sick. You talked about your mother moving in with you. I don't think you're denying that the florist's business was shut down for a period of time, probably greater than two years.
Off and on, we were doing things in between and we did funerals, we did some other, you know, holiday stuff.
But it sounds like it wasn't being run as a business.
We were not, we were following Mr. Bullock's command. Nobody is to be allowed on the property for safety. And Mr. Bullock can vouch for us. Whenever he told us something, we always did it.
Yeah.
So we would not have customers come to the shop. We would meet them outside, in the parking lot.
But it's really, would you say, I don't want to put words in your mouth. Would you say it was a business? I mean, our, the dilemma, and again, it's all fact-based. Our F3B is very clear and we take that very seriously. We have to, whether we like it or not. You know, your family legacy, you know, both of you, you, your brother, as I told him earlier tonight, you know, I only know him because they, I've heard he's a Crosley expert. You have the family florist. 1948, same phone number.
Yes.
It probably was two digits at one point. So yes, there's a legacy here. You know, Bob grew up in town, I think he knew who your family was. You talked to other people, they knew it. When I came here, I used to drive down 115 and say, "What is that down there? What is that?" But the problem is, it no longer meets the test of zoning. And there are so many more things that your parents' legacy, you can represent their legacy by doing. Wounded Warriors, fantastic. My sister works for Fisher House. We understand the boxes, but as we all know, if the boxes aren't there, the boxes will be somewhere else. They're at the American Legion and rent them. They're at the Catholic Church and rent them.
Oh, they rent where?
They're everywhere. So they do, ideally, the goal of those boxes will still be met. If they can't go to yours, they'll go somewhere else.
I understand.
But I think the problem or the dilemma this board will face, and again, based on facts, is, you know, we feel for your family, but at the same time is, we have to follow the zoning rules of Norfolk.
And I guess the zoning rules, we were ignorant and that's really, they never say that's a reason.
Yeah.
We were ignorant that what was going on was going to cause us to come to this point.
And I think that's, that's the real dilemma, as much as we would, you know, we would, I'd love to see pictures from 1948, you know, pictures of the florists, love to see what went on. You know, I'm a history buff. Ross Peeny, I know Ross well and he's a history buff. So I can see Ross going and walking the property and saying, this is wonderful.
His mother came all the time. His mother was one of our best customers.
You know, he was just, you know, he probably wouldn't start talking about the Duck Restaurant and everything, you know, and it's wonderful. And it really is. The sad part is our bylaws and that if we, if we, if we don't do it for one and we do it for another, it creates a problem for this board and it creates a problem in town.
Interesting.
And it also, it would be difficult for the zoning enforcement officer to apply the laws because suddenly, we're suddenly saying, well, what you say doesn't matter because we like this person. We don't dislike you people at all. We don't dislike what your family did. It is probably people, I don't know if they're in the room, that probably children got corsages and wonderful things from your family. But the fact that the florist closes, the fact that that property reverts back to residential, certainly, in my mind, does not mean that your family legacy is lost. You know, I even know your, I think it was your brother put on, on Norfolk Net last year when your mother died. Her, sort of her obituary for her. And it was interesting. It was your son, okay, yeah. It was interesting.
Yeah.
And so your legacy won't, won't die. Certainly not. The problem is our zoning says that once a property is no longer active for two years, it loses that protection.
May I just ask a question?
Sure.
I know this is opening a can of beans, but if 84 is doing cutting of wood, that's 82, so there has been business. So you're in a dilemma.
Well, that's another, that's an open hearing that we'll be revisiting in May.
Exactly.
And so that's a different, that's a different story. You, I guess the old adage, you can't have your cake and eat it too. You can't, you can't want to be 82, you can't want to piggyback off of 84.
Absolutely. No, I totally agree with you. I'm just saying.
Okay. So, so I guess my concern is, I guess it's, I would love to ask you a million questions about facts, but I think the fact that's most important is that the business did, was not in business for a period of two years.
It was not viable. We wanted to make it viable again. We wanted to come back.
I understand. Understand. It was tough times and especially for an older type of business like this, so.
And now that we don't have our mother to take care of, now we have the time to do it.
Yes. Yes.
Hi, I'm Ronald Palumbo. I'm her son.
Okay.
Just, you know, if it's deemed that, say, you know, 84 does, you know, come through as an agriculturally-zoned area for cutting wood and you don't, you know, close them down for doing that, and it being one piece of property, wouldn't that affect us as well? I mean, if it's one piece of property, how could you say that they could only do that when it's not deeded as separate?
That's a fair question. As I said earlier, and if Dave wants to jump in, he can, is, A is, it's not being, it's being considered non-agricultural. Agricultural would mean you were growing the flowers, he was growing the wood. So neither one of you gets the agricultural exemption. You both get the two-year cessation.
Well, I was talking to John.
But as far as, you know, if you, the piggybacking, you can't, I don't think, and David DeLuca, Attorney DeLuca could certainly speak better than this than I can, I don't think you can apply separately and then try to piggyback the other one. Especially, you're here for your hearing.
Right.
The other hearing's a separate hearing.
Correct.
They will both be looked at individually.
Correct.
Dave, do you want to add to that?
Mr. Carmer and I spoke with today.
Yeah, we, you heard lots of facts about the identity of the property and, you know, it's not really this board's, you know, obligation to determine all of those facts relative to the actual footprint of the property. There's, there's a long and complicated family history here. Your job is to just simply look at the activities on those properties, the business activities on those properties, whether or not they existed. Do they continue to exist? Do they, under our bylaw, have the right to exist? The fact that, that both of these activities appear to be on the same site, even if they have different or the same addresses, you have the right to judge them independently.
Okay.
And I did speak with John Carmer in the assessor's office today and he said we were zoned commercial and was being returned to R2, residential 2.
Yeah.
So I thought it was always called agricultural, but he said it was commercial.
No.
Okay.
Yeah. They, they.
He gave me a lesson.
They put "commercial" on a lot of buildings in town years ago.
Yeah, he gave me a lesson.
Carriages have "commercial." It's amazing what we put "commercial" on years ago. Any accessory building to a house was actually deemed a commercial building for some reason, but I guess they didn't know where, there was no other key to punch. Is there any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I just had a question.
Yeah.
So, so are we to determine then, because you said something, you said that we can look at the business activities separately. So let's just pretend for a minute that this was, because we don't, I guess one thing I'm thinking is, what I'm just thinking this thing through a little bit is, I didn't know if it might be to their benefit to delay this hearing to, until there's a determination as to what the nature of that land is. Is it one piece? Is it two pieces? Is it, are they two separate addresses? Because, because what I'm wondering is, let's just pretend for a minute that this was determined to be one piece of land and there's been a continuous operation on that land for the lumber portion of this. Could these folks come back and try to reassert their right to run a business based on this, you know, this supposed discovery that, that there was continuous operation on this land uninterrupted? Granted, it may not have been a greenhouse, but it was a business activity on the land. I'm, you know, so that's, I'm just trying to catch the thing up.
I understand the question. Do you want to address that?
Well, you know, it's an interesting theory if we were to assume certain facts and without predetermining the outcome of the previous hearing. If you were to find that that was a continuous business activity, the question is whether or not, you know, these donation boxes could, you know, could be sustained as a, as a continuous business activity on the property in connection with that other unrelated.
Yes.
I'm not sure that that, that works here since the petitioner we have before us was running a business that was a florist business. These were, you know, accessory to that business, if anything. And I'm not sure that the, the woodcutting business that you heard of earlier has any connection at all to, to this particular use of the property. You know, there are parties that share no common interest there.
Well, the only thing they would share theoretically is the land.
Right. They, they would be present on the land at the same time. But I don't see that that works in that, you know, that the business or occupations are totally separate, totally different. I mean, these people do not share common interests.
I'd like to add one more thing about the land. We've been waiting since September, it'll be two years in September, for a superior court date. So this isn't something that's going to happen and be settled quickly. We've been doing this for years.
I understand.
So, tough decision.
I understand that. Also, Bob?
Semi, you know, I just, I guess I'm keeping this thing through, analyzing this and I'm, what I'm thinking of is, let's pretend for a minute that there's been a wood operation on this since, wood chopping operation on this land. Let's pretend it's one piece of land, the wood operation's been on there since 1940-something, it's been continuous and ongoing. And then we've had a florist shop that's been since whenever. And if that business, if the florist shop business, see, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get a clear distinction of, because they're two separate businesses on the same piece of land, why does that matter? And if a florist shop had changed its operation in its history from a florist shop to maybe a retail vegetable stand or something like that, had that happened, would they, would that be a continuous operation, you know, would, or would they have lost their right to operate because they changed the nature of their business? So, so my question sort of goes to, if there were two businesses, two separate businesses owned by the same family on this property, and one business, one section of the business either changes operation or just plain shuts down, does that then make that business not eligible to operate anymore, that particular business? Is it the land? Is it the operation?
We're here to review the operation. Both of these, both applications filed for an F3B appeal. So that's what our scope is, is the F3B appeal. The woodcutting business is an F3B appeal, which will, which we have not made a determination on, which will be handled in May. We have the florist business, which is an F3B appeal, which we're hearing tonight. That's what we're hearing. We're just hearing a use.
But the issue goes to.
What happens, what happens after the public hearings close?
Yeah.
What happens after we deliberate? You know, the parties may choose to go a different route, but that, that's not what we're reviewing at this time.
Okay, but the issue with respect to these is, is a discontinuation of operation.
Correct.
And, and what you're saying is, is because there are two separate parties on the same piece of land asserting the same, the same rights, that we, that one does not affect the other?
Correct. Take out the land. Take out the land completely on this, on this matter.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay. At this time, I'll open it up to any public facts, if there is any, that can add to the case. Okay. Hearing none. I would, I'll wait for Don to come back. Maybe he won't.
I saw his glasses are still here.
What I'd like, you know, we can do it, Amy, without Don. Could I have a motion to close the public hearing for 82 North Street?
I make a motion that we close the public hearing for 82 North Street for the F3B appeal.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming in. We will be deliberating this. I do not think we'll be deliberating this tonight. We will probably deliberate this, I think, Amy, you were gonna give me a schedule. Do we, our next is April 14th, is that right? Our next meeting?
The next meeting is April 18.
April 18.
Yeah. I think you were wondering if we had anything on Tuesday or Thursday next week.
Correct.
This room is open on Tuesday and Thursday of next week.
Of next week?
It's not open on Wednesday.
I will not be here.
It's on Tuesday, Thursday.
Hmm?
I won't be here next week.
You won't be here next week?
No. I'll be gone 10th to the, to the, 10th to, I don't even know, 12th, I think it is. I'll be back on the 12th.
That's Tuesday, Thursday, 10th.
Dave, can an associate member take the place of a full member in an appeal hearing if a full member cannot participate? We have a five-member board. They can't, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Would everybody else be available next Thursday?
Thursday.
Okay. So, so make a motion, so we will deliberate this next Thursday, which is the date, Amy, is?
The 12th.
April 12th at 7:00? Okay?
Would you come here?
Here, at the, at this room 124. Okay?
Thank you for your time.
You should know that there's, there is the need for a supermajority to overturn.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. What he means by a supermajority is a five-member board. Four members have to vote in the affirmative.
And if you only have four members deliberating this, right?
We'd have four full members and one associate member.
Oh, okay. All right, so you will have five, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much for coming in. 7:35. We, at 7:15, we had scheduled 60 River Road, which has asked us for a continuance until April 18th. So could, at 8:00, at the KP Middle School. So could I have a motion to continue the 60 River Road hearing until April 18th at 8:00 PM?
Before.
Hmm?
I, I have a question.
Okay.
Is that going to be feasible time-wise?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Then I'll make a motion that we continue the hearing for 60 River Road to April 18th at 8:00 PM.
At the KP Middle School.
KP Middle School.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we had scheduled for 7:30, it's 7:35. Right now, 113 North Street has asked us to withdraw their application without prejudice. So could I have a motion to withdraw the 113 North Street?
Amy?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I believe we haven't opened that hearing yet. Oh, it said it was continued, so I stand corrected, I'm wrong.
Okay.
Got to know what's wrong.
So could I get a motion to withdraw without prejudice, the 113 North Street hearing?
Do you have to close it in any formal fashion?
Hmm?
Do you have to close the hearing in any formal fashion? Do you have to first close that hearing in some fashion, or is it just withdraw?
It was never opened, right?
Yeah, we, there was never any public testimony.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we can just withdraw.
So we can withdraw without prejudice.
Right.
All right, so I make a motion that we, I make a motion that we.
Withdraw.
Withdraw without prejudice. The, was it a special permit or what was the application again for?
It was for a special permit for 113 North Street.
Application for a special permit at 113 North Street. We're sure without.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, it is now 7:35. Is Debbie Robbins?
Here we are.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We had scheduled Debbie for 8:00, but we can, because she is not really a hearing, she's here to, as a, to discuss with us, a two-family home. We can do it at this time. So Debbie, would you like to come forward and talk to the board about what your thoughts are?
Where do I go? Just stay here or?
You can stay there as long as you have a microphone.
I don't know if I need one, but.
You do. The audience, the, the, the audience at home wants to hear you.
Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you. Okay.
So, I live at 75 Main Street, which it.
Is this one?
Okay. Which has been classified by the assessor's records and by my, my father kind of told us the history. It was a single-family home. My grandfather built it in 1926. And in 1952, my parents got married June 1st. My grandparents converted the upstairs bedrooms into a little apartment, so my mother and father had place to live when they got married, because my dad was still in college. So it's been a two-family ever since. They lived in it until he got his first teaching job, which was in Vermont. And then it's been rented out since then. I have, I don't know what you want. I have pictures of the, the structure, the interior of the structure, showing that it has two kitchens, it had, and I've also got some bills to show that we each have propane and the only thing that is gas in there is the oven. So we each have our own oven and our own propane tank. We each have our own electricity. I've been living there for 30 years. And we only have oil, one oil heating system, and I control the heat for the entire structure.
Okay. And you've, and when did your dad get his first job that, and left the house?
Um, let's see. He was, they got married in 1952. I think he was a sophomore. Well, by the time he graduated, they had me, my brother, and my sister was on the way. I do remember that, and she's three years younger than me. So that would bring it to around 1956, 1957. They moved to Vermont and then my grandparents first rented it out to a family member and then it's just been rented ever since then.
Okay. And what are you looking, what are you looking for from the board?
Okay, well, my dad passed away in November and, oh, thank you. I, I owned it jointly with him, so it's all come on my shoulders now. And I am actually going to move into his house, which is right next door. And that's a small ranch. It's better suited for me, because I'm alone. And we're looking to sell 75 Main Street. We had an appraisal done and the appraisal came back that the highest and best use for the property is as a two-family. So our, my brother, John, is with me tonight, and we're trying to see if you would consider classifying it as a legal two-family, because it's a beautiful structure, but it needs a lot of work. And I know that would mean probably gutting the walls, all-new electrical, all-new plumbing. The kitchens have not been updated since the 50s, so it, it's, it's tired and it needs perking up. And we're, we're trying to sell it to somebody that will do that instead of just tearing it down.
Okay. All right. Bob, if, if, obviously, D-232 says that they can, with a special permit, can convert this property, if, even if, if we don't really know, they can convert it with a special permit to a two-family. Obviously, it was built prior to zoning, so therefore, I would think, would that, that would be a vehicle for them to do this, correct? Especially in light of the fact that they have to do major renovations to the property. And what I'm hearing is there's no grandfathering of any building codes anymore. Those days are over. Is that correct, or?
Actually, Debbie called me, and that's what I had suggested to her, was to apply for a special permit for the, to convert it to a two-family. That way, it's clean, it's done. I can't go back to 1952 and figure out whether or not it actually was a legal two-family, so.
Yeah.
So, I, I, to me, that was the easiest way to, to do it, if the board so chooses to, you know, give the special permit.
Oh, is that what we're doing? See, I had, I have no clue. I, I just thought you.
Oh, come on, you're smart in that. You used to be an assessor in town. You used to run the town, didn't you, years ago?
I could do assessing. I didn't say I knew how to do your job.
It, it sounds like that would be the cleanest and simplest method, is to just apply for a special permit.
So do we apply for that through you?
Absolutely, through, Amy will be more than happy to help you through that. And then you would, it would be clean.
Yeah.
There wouldn't be any question as to what it was before, what it was after. Obviously, there's going to be some building code issues that you're certainly, I would suggest you talk to Bob before you do, after you get a special permit, before you do any kind of construction, to make sure you're up to date on all the building code rules and regulations and what you can and can't do, energy codes, stretch codes.
Okay.
Which is probably the most important thing.
And, okay, would we apply for the special permit, or if we sell it, would the seller apply? That's, this is where I'm confused.
Well, not, not being a real estate guy, I would say if you want to sell as a two-family, it's probably worth more than a single-family, so I would suggest you do it. Get the special permit.
Okay, we, we get the special permit and then we can turn that over to whoever we sell it to?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Any questions from the board?
Just clarification. You live at 73?
No, I live at 75 right now, which is the one in question.
I'm moving to 73.
But I'm moving to 73.
But 75 is the one that would be a special permit.
Yeah.
Request for a two-family.
Yeah.
Which district is this in, in terms of residential? Which district is this in?
Which, what are you, what our, what our district are you in? Do you know Debbie, I've had?
Oh, God.
I'm right down, I'm about quarter of a mile down the street on Main Street.
You should know that answer, Debbie. You should know that answer, Debbie. You should know that.
In the R1, would she be.
I've been in Westwood for 14 years. I can't remember what this.
Come on now. My brother always speaks highly of you.
So I, I haven't looked at the book yet, but in the R1 district, she can apply for a special.
Yes.
Permit to have a house classified as a two-family.
In all our, in, in all our, our districts, you can apply for a special permit to convert from a single-family to a two-family, regardless of what district.
Are you interested in any of the pictures?
No.
Oh, okay.
How's that? How's that for an easy answer?
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions?
You didn't have to do that, John.
I, I would just suggest that you meet with the building commissioner to truly understand what all of the costs are, because, and I know that, you know, Bob is up on everything as it relates to all of the fire and safety requirements for a two-family under one structure, which may, may require sprinklers and other things, I don't know. But you, you, you might want to meet with him to, so you get an appreciation for the potential cost, so that you don't go through this process and then realize that it's not financially viable.
Well, I think Debbie's going to get the special permit and then sell the property and let whoever buys it convert it. Is that probably right, Debbie?
Yeah, I, I mean, that's one of the reasons why I'm moving next door. My dad's needed a little help, which Bob knows. I've already pulled permits over there and done a lot of work over there, but, yeah, this was too much for me to handle.
Sure. Okay.
So.
Great. So see Amy tomorrow, if you want to go see her, if you have got time, and she will guide you through the special permit process, since she's got it on the schedule. And we look forward to you coming in.
Okay.
And you can, and the, and the pictures and everything you can give to Amy is part of your package, so they won't, they won't be wasted?
They won't be wasted.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. Appreciate it. Okay. It is 7:45 PM. Why don't we, we do have an 8:00 hearing with 144 Secong Street. So at this time, why don't we take a look at the minutes? I, I don't think I want to start deliberating 123 Secong with 15 minutes. I think we're better off looking at the minutes. And, and then we'll have the hearing at 8:00 for 144 Secong Street. So why don't we start, I think, Amy, we have three sets of minutes?
Yes.
So we have March, why don't we start with March 1st, then we'll, I'm sorry, January 24th, then we'll go to March 1st and March 7th.
Is there the version you want signed?
Amy, you have extra minutes, if anybody does not have.
I have copies, yes, right there. She'll need three copies, three different ones.
I don't have access. Oh, fine.
Okay, which one are we doing first?
We're doing a January 24th.
I relooked at that one.
I can't, I wasn't here for that, so. That's a gimmick.
She can look at it.
Then you might as well start looking at March 1st.
I wasn't here for this one either. I've never been to the cafeteria. March 7th, maybe. March 1st, no.
For which one? March 1st?
No, March 1st, she was absent.
I don't think I started.
But it says she was here?
No, it says she was absent.
Do I have a motion to accept the meetings of January 4th, 2018?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting of January 24th, 2018, as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Amy, on page 2 of 6, at the bottom of the page.
Yeah.
You have John Semes, comma, Robin.
I have what?
It says John Semes, S-E-M-E-S, and then, comma, Robin, asked if there was a cut and fill. Is that two people or one person, or?
I don't know.
If you just want to check that.
January 24th, at the bottom of the page.
2 of 6.
Um, yeah. You know, I'm going to have to check the tape.
Okay. I want to see if our board member has caught it.
No, no, it's a good catch.
All right, that's the only thing I noted. We have a motion, a second? All those in favor?
Well, do, well, we.
You, as amended. You can.
As amended, okay.
Okay.
So, Don, as, you have to restate your.
Do I have to restate my motion?
Yes, you do.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of January 24th, 2018, as amended.
Second.
All, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll look at the March 1st minutes.
Any heads up over there?
Hmm?
Have any heads up for us?
No, I don't. I think I'm playing games, huh?
No, no, that's a good catch.
Put for something. Put for something.
Chris, is it significant if I'm listing twice?
Yeah, she already caught that, that she's removed you twice, yeah. She likes you so much, she keeps putting you twice.
What day of the week was that meeting? I don't have my iPad, my iPhone. March 1st.
It's broken here. Who's here on the, the Secong? Yeah.
The one, the one thing I noticed on this is we have Mike Kalies as present on March first. He was actually absent on March first.
Okay, thank you.
Do I, do I have a motion to accept the March first minutes?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we accept the minutes for March first, two thousand eighteen.
As amended.
As amended, of course, yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And let's look at March seventh.
Is that what you meant by again?
Yes, again, yeah. See, I even crossed it out.
Was Amy absent on March seventh? Was Amy absent on March seventh?
Say again.
Was Amy absent on March seventh?
Was Amy?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, she has herself down as, in fact, the last one, too, March first and March seventh.
I must have just copied it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you were present both March first and March?
Oh, yeah.
All right, sorry.
Thank you.
March seventh.
Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of March seventh, two thousand eighteen?
There's going to be another one that we say as amended, right?
Yes.
Something like, it's like the spilling of latches, I think, is a concern, right?
That's actually how it's spelled.
It's spelled with.
There's no T.
There is no T, okay. Well, then, as amended, I make a motion that we accept the minutes, make a motion that we accept the minutes for March seventh, two thousand eighteen, as amended.
Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
It's the first time I heard it since law school, so I was actually used it.
Yes. Okay. At this time, we're going to take a five-minute recess. We, at eight o'clock, we will be having a hearing for one forty-four Secong Street Appeal, so we're going to take a five-minute recess. Until that time, we are waiting for Attorney Chris Agostino, I think he was tied up prior to this, so again, a five-minute recess, and we will reconvene with the hearing for one forty-four Secong Street. Okay? Welcome back to the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for April fourth. It is now eight oh four. At this time, we are going to continue the public hearing for one forty-four Secong Street. Tonight, we are going to hear from the peer reviewer, Patrick Gardner, who's with us. But first, I think I'd like Bob Bullock to bring the board back up to, to date on what went on. It's been a while since we, we discussed this topic, so if you could bring us up to date.
Okay. Back in August of last year, I got a call from one of the neighbors that was claiming that she thought that the, there was some site work being done on her property. So I met, I went out there and I had actually contacted Mr. O'Hart and asked him to meet me out there, and we walked the property. He showed me basically where all the, the stakes were for the lot lines. I found that they weren't actually on this person's property, but it was, as I walked the property, I found that there was a lot of excavation work that had been done, a lot of testing holes that were done, but along with that, it seemed like there was a lot of areas that were gravled in, large areas and kind of a roadway going out in the back. And I, it explained to him at that point that, to me, he was in violation of, of our zoning, where you're only supposed to do very limited clearing and, and do your testing, but they went beyond the clearing and they actually started mining some of the gravel and spreading it out, creating a roadway around the site. There was clearly areas that they had done it just the way that is normally done, where the tractor would just go over the virgin soil to the areas that they want to do the park testing, dig the holes, and, and move on, but there are a lot of areas that basically were mapping out a roadway through the property with gravel that was spread over the, over the area. Some areas, I don't know if they're, they were getting fairly close to what I saw was wetlands. I'm not an expert, so I'm not going to say definitively that that's the, they're in the wetlands, I'm just saying that they, it seemed to me that they were pretty close to it, so. So I put a stop work order on it, sent them a letter, told them to stop. I asked them to contact the DPW because they had opened up onto, to Secong Street, an area. I didn't want a runoff going out onto the street, so he contacted the DPW. They put up some hay bales, did some, put a gate up, and pretty much everything I had asked him to do, he did, so from that point, I turned it over to the board to determine how do you replicate that? How do you determine what the violation would be? And so that's kind of where we're at, at this point, so.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Attorney DeLuca, do you have anything at this time?
Well, my understanding of this is that, that while Mr. Bullock did issue a stop work order, concerns a, an interpretation of section.
D, D-one.
D, D-one. And as I'm sure the board members are aware, D-one, A-one, which, you know, gives us the standard of what's permissible and what's not permissible for non-residential uses, land clearing, excavation, filling, gravel removal. You know, that, that test is, is pretty clear. You get the opportunity to do that for purposes of, you know, some of the engineering work that needs to be done, but you don't get to, to just, you know, continue beyond that scope.
Thank you, Attorney DeLuca. Attorney Agostino, would you like to say anything before Patrick Gardner does his presentation of the peer review, or?
Sure, nothing more than just to introduce myself and fill in a little color as to some of the things that have happened since, I think, the last time the board met with the applicant. For those of us that have not met, my name's Christopher Agostino. I'm now counsel for Lakeland Hills, Lakeland Commons. I was not engaged originally to address anything with respect to the stop work order. Rather, I was going to get on board and represent the applicant during the substantive forty-B process. But I just happened to be present at the hearing where Mr. Bullock presented initially on the stop work order, and the applicant presented a response as to why it didn't violate the bylaw, and I kind of took a step back and was trying to understand the procedural posture of things, and I subsequently got in touch with Mr. O'Hart and just looked at the big picture as far as what we were dealing with. And I think at the end of the day, we have to keep in mind that this is a comprehensive permit project, and the bylaws, the local bylaws, don't necessarily apply to this project from a procedural perspective. So there are other procedures that can be brought to bear for testing with respect to a forty-B project, which may give the board another option in, in ruling on whatever it is that's before the board tonight. I was not involved with the initial appeal of the building inspector's decision, so procedurally, I think there were a few questions before the board tonight, but I think that there are several ways for the board to resolve this and come to the conclusion that either there isn't any remedy available here, or that the stop work order was not necessarily applicable in this instance, or that, and we can discuss further the actual facts as to whether or not there was some site clearing that was mistaken with site clearing that had happened years prior and not necessarily in connection with the testing that was done on the site. I think I had presented some additional materials to the board showing aerial photography that shows substantial clearing of the site well prior to Mr. O'Hart's proposal of the project. And now that there is a forty-B project proposed, I understand that the town is encountering a lot of development applications these days, and I, you know, obviously commend the building inspector for being vigilant. The town has an interest in not having entire swaths of undisturbed land clear cut, but at the same time, there are rules that allow the developer to conduct limited testing, which I think is ultimately the conclusion as to what happened on the site. So however we resolve it, I think we can get to the point where there's a resolution, and hopefully we can move forward with the substantive portion of the applicant's comprehensive permit application. So with that, I'm happy to hear from Mr. Garner. I was able to read his report, and I think he comes to the conclusion that ultimately the activity on site is consistent with Title V testing and soil testing on site. So with that, we can hear from Mr. Garner.
I would, I would remind everyone that, and Chris, that the forty-B, though you've got a letter from Mass Housing, we have not opened a public hearing yet for a forty-B on this project. So this is still preliminary testing. We have not entered the forty-B process, so therefore our local bylaws still hold weight, I think, in this case.
I, I don't know, has Attorney Hill weighed in on that? Because has Attorney Hill weighed in on that analysis?
Um, no, he hasn't.
So, and again, I think, I have had the pleasure of being in front of this board before, and I, obviously, you know, I think it's one of the more professional boards that I've, I've dealt with as far as really digging into what is the law, how does it work, and applying the law to the facts. And I think at one of the prior hearings that we had, there are a slew of bylaws, local bylaws, that would be lumped in with what are procedural, and they're sort of subsumed within the forty-B process. You know, for instance, there are bylaws that say before you apply for a permit, you have to go and get permits from the Conservation Commission, or there are other bylaws that say you have to submit a certain application fee. This board does not have a specific comprehensive permit policies and procedures for the application of a comprehensive permit. So bylaws as far as preliminary testing in connection with residential development would be, in my opinion, lumped together with all of those administrative bylaws that ultimately are subsumed within the forty-B process. So when the applicant received a project eligibility letter in July of two thousand seventeen, it had entered the forty-B process. And interestingly enough, the, the project eligibility letter was very specific about testing on site, and that's what we subsequently went, that's what the applicant subsequently went and did. So I don't think we need to get too granular as far as what element we are in the process. I think we can find a resolution under any number of theories, but I, I think that this type of, the, the building inspector, for instance, is specifically named under the forty-B regulations as a local board. He's an individual, but he's subsumed as a local board that is replaced with the jurisdiction of this board for any decisions made relative to a comprehensive permit process, project. So ultimately, this board has the power to review and advise and assist, and if necessary, replace the decision of the building inspector. So all of that comes in under forty-B. So I, I think, again, don't need to get too granular, but, you know, there are, there is a sort of sequence of events there, and the administrative application of forty-B regulations, you know, there's, there's some room there.
Very good. At this time, I would like to recognize Patrick Garner, and he's going to provide us with a peer review of what was provided to him by the appellant.
I'd be happy to stand or sit.
Whatever you're more comfortable with.
So I'm Patrick Garner, I'm a land surveyor, a certified soil evaluator, a wetland scientist, and hydrologist.
Amy, are you, does it work? Oh, bear with us, Patrick. You were doing well.
Is that mic on?
I think that's going to take a little while to warm up.
I've got a green light.
Okay.
We just won't have the video for a couple of minutes. It's coming, it fades in.
There we go.
This is going to do poorly.
It's lighting up now, look.
Yeah. I think it will brighten up as we go, otherwise we can turn the lights down.
Can everybody see it?
The lights tend to go off though.
It's starting to see better.
There we go. Great.
No, that was good, Amy.
But I can't stop it. It's either on or off. That's a little dark.
Okay. All right, Patrick.
All right, so I will note initially that my mandate from the board was broader than what I ended up doing. It was to include a, an analysis of their survey, specifically a look at whether they should be doing an, what's called an Ulta NSPS survey. We didn't get that data from Andrews surveying, and I think the applicant took the position that it wasn't necessary. So after going back and forth with the board, I did a partial sort of evaluation that is not as broad as the original request. So what I, what I ended up doing was looking at two-foot contour topography, characterizing the underbrush vegetation, looking at cart path locations, observing the evidence of the, of the earth moving in excavation, and evaluating wetlands on site, whether delineated or not. And I used the Andrews data, survey maps that were part of the application to the board. I walked the site and also looked at what's called the NRED, Wetlands Plan by Andrews. So essentially, my evaluation on a broad, broad stroke would be that I agree with the building inspector. There was, there was broad and sort of a bit unusual earth work that was done on the site. As a soil evaluator, I've done hundreds and hundreds of deep holes on numerous sites, and what was happening, what has been happening on the site is unusual. That doesn't necessarily say it was bad, but it was, it was not what you typically expect to see. Most developers have an intent to get in and out quickly, they want to do the work, they want to find the data. They want, machines are expensive, engineers who are doing observations of the deep holes are expensive, and so the intent is to get in, dig the holes, record them, get out. But in this case, the existing cart paths were widened, not dramatically, but two to four feet probably. The roads were graded down in places. The work that was done that exceeded the existing cart pass on the site was not necessary, and that was sort of what made it unusual. So when I walked the site and spent the time out there, I, part of what I looked at was why the work had taken place. And frankly, I couldn't, I couldn't understand why it had happened. There was no obvious reason that the work that I observed had taken place. But again, I'm not saying that necessarily was something wrong or bad, it was just unusual. So I recorded that, and a lot of that is documented in my report, in the photos that you've seen. I'm pausing only because my report disappeared. So yes, I agree with Chris that the work all looks like it was typically Title V related work. There's evidence all over the site of deep holes that were dug and that were either backfilled and graded out, or partially backfilled. Most of them were backfilled properly. There are a few instances where that wasn't the case. We've talked about a lot of this already with the trail widening. Yeah, as context too, I want to note that the trails that go back into the site go back about 2,500 feet. So we're not talking a three or 400-foot trail back into it, it's an extensive, wide roadway that goes back. And yeah, we can, we can just walk through these photos one by one, which would be a good intent. This is a view into the, the entryway into the site from Secconk, and there's very minimal evidence of any work that may have occurred in this area. So if we could go to figure two. This is at about 350 to 400 feet into the site, and the left-hand edge shows where the trail was widened, excavated down by a foot and a half, two feet. I think, I should note as someone who does a lot of this sort of work, what was unusual about seeing the grading and the widening was that the equipment that is typically used to do deep holes can get all over the place. They don't, it doesn't even need trails. They can wander through the woods, and they do so quite deppily. So the work that took place was something that I scratched my head about, but I think I'll drop that at this point, I've, you know, made that point. And we'll just take a look and observe some of the photos that I took. So let's go to this figure, yep. So at this point, we're about 800 feet into the site, and this is a large, wide flattened area. It's roughly 80 by 100, and it's graded flat, it's cleared out. It's certainly unusual for depot work, but again, as I noted in the report, this could have been a staging area for the equipment. There could have certainly been a purpose for the, for the work that was done. Let's take a look at figure five. This is another view of the same area that sort of shows it as a broader section. Go back up to, let's go back to figure four, if you will.
Four or six?
Yeah, go to four, if you will. Well, no, let's go back to five.
Yeah, when I clicked down, it went to six.
Okay, it may be six I'm trying to go to. Yeah, so this is, again, another photo of the same area. It's self-evident, and go back up to five, if you will. So this is a, fairly typical of both rocks and trees that are stockpiled beside the same area. Seven? So this is excavation work that was apparently done. I don't know whether this was done in conjunction with deep holes, or whether it had a different purpose. When I was out on the site, it had rained four or five days beforehand, and it wasn't extensive rain. Normally, rain would have percolated away or run off the site, but this was a low natural area on the site that continued to hold water. My opinion as a wetland scientist and hydrologist is that if this grading had not taken place, I probably would have found a wetland meadow, or an isolated vegetated wetland in this location. It's unusual to do deep holes that are conducted below groundwater itself and then left like this. Usually, the soil evaluator doing the work can recognize that they're in a wetland area and they don't purposely do holes and that sort of thing, but we, I have another example of the same area, if we could go to number eight. Yeah, so this is another view from a different angle of the same area. It may be that before the grading work was done, that this area then ran down gradient into another wetland area we're going to look at as we go through the site. So let's, let's take a look at nine. This shows a pretty deep cut on the left-hand side in that shadowed area. The cut in this section is five, six feet at least. A little difficult to know why it was done. Again, the machinery didn't need to do this to, to cut through it, but nevertheless, and this is at about 1,000 feet into the site. Number 10? Just a typical example, the trail pattern, the trail system has trees that were knocked down that are set aside so they can use the trail. In this case, the trail is roughly, it appears what it probably was before the work was done. So very little activity happened here, and this is at about 1,100 feet. This is about 1,200 feet off the site, same trails on the left-hand side, not unusual to see during depot work. I presume that test holes were done on the left side and then backfilled. Yeah, this is another sort of unusual area. This is at about 1,350 feet into the site, and I had, I found standing water, which is obvious, it's partially frozen over here. But again, unusual to have done any kind of testing or holes in an area that would be, where groundwater would be this high. What bothered me a bit about this too is that it's not evident in the picture, but to the left and below, maybe 50 feet to the right, is where a intermittent stream has been cut off by the excavation work. And it's possible, but it's going to be almost impossible to reconstruct, that this was a standing pocket of wetland that connected to the stream, and it may have been the upgradient beginning of the stream. It's unusual to see, but again, because of the extent of the work, I'm speculating at this point. Let's go to 13. Number of the test holes had PVC pipe. This is left in place so they can go back and do groundwater monitoring at a later time. This is just an example that, this little area by itself is about 50 by 90 in size, and again, it's unusual to the extent and the width of the work that was done. 14? Another example of off, of off-trail work, nothing noteworthy, just fairly typical depot work. At this point, I'm about 2,100 feet into the site. Trail width is about 14 to 15, 16 feet wide, and the cuts that were made to widen this are very obvious on the right-hand edge. You can see the roots sticking out, that sort of thing. It was probably lowered a foot to a foot and a half in this, in this area. Nothing noteworthy here, just another example of off, off-trail testing that was done and backfilled. So at this point, one of the, the tasks that the board asked me to, to look at was whether wetlands were delineated properly. So I should note that there, the wetlands are protected in Norfolk in two ways. One, throughout the Commonwealth, they're protected under the Wetland Protection Act, which is the state DEP, regulations that protect them in all towns identically. Norfolk has a more extensive protection that broadens the types of wetlands and the extent of the wetlands that are protected. So what I did in my report is I highlighted and read the areas that would apply to the site and that could possibly be impacted by some of the work on site. And that's any freshwater wetland, marsh, wet meadow, bog, and then on sea, I've got any lake, river, pond, stream, estuary, or water course. And the bylaw is very careful to call out ephemeral, intermittent, or perennial. And then F is any land subject to flooding or inundation by groundwater or surface water. And the examples that we are looking at four or five slides back of the standing water that had been graded through and that were on the site are possible areas of land subject to flooding or inundation by groundwater or surface water. But if we keep going down, if you will... This is a copy of one of the Andrews plans, the blue highlighting is my own, and let me get up and, I think I can be more effective if I sort of show. This is, this is the mapped wetlands that were turned into the Conservation Commission. What, what, what the plans don't show is that there's an intermittent stream that comes up at this point, and it stops here and the trail cuts it off abruptly right here and wanders, wanders down like this and through here. There's another very extensive area of wetlands in this section that may have worked its way down like this and connected at one time. It doesn't appear to now, but this has been cut off and the trail wanders through this section in here. Neither of these have been mapped, but the, the area of standing water that I was describing that I thought might have been cut off by the excavation work is right here. So at one time, that may have come down and that, that may have been the beginning or the headwater of the stream. And this is, figure 17 is simply an example of, of the stream. This is taken, the shot is about 100 to 150 feet down gradient of the trail system itself. So that, on a broad sort of look, that's what I found. I can elaborate.
Sure. Thank you very much. Chris, I'm going to take questions from the board first, and I'll open it up to you to ask, to review it, okay? Any questions from the board for Patrick at this moment? Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Garner, you and I haven't had a chance to meet before tonight. I, I'm a little confused by the presentation and I had a couple of questions. Most importantly, did you have a chance to meet with the applicant on site? So one of the things we had asked specifically was that we be present when you had a chance to go out on site, and you indicated, your presentation, that things were unusual, or unexplained, or not sure why. I mean, I think we could have gotten you a lot of those answers and we would have appreciated the opportunity to do so. You know, for instance, you make references to a dozer on site. There was no dozer on site, never. The machinery wasn't used. So we could have explained something like that. Also, in a few places, you're showing wide-open swaths and you're giving me, and I don't know whether anyone else is getting the impression, that the applicant was the cause of that clearing. One of the things that was missing from your report was any discussion about prior clearing versus present clearing. And I think, again, what we have maintained all along is that the majority of the clearing on site was done circa 2005, 2006, and we have aerial photography and survey work to conclusively show that, but I didn't see that addressed to any great extent in your report. Beyond that, when I read your report, there was a clear statement, and you indicated that you agreed with me, that the recent site work is likely connected with conventional Title V depot testing. That's, that's what I read in the report, so I didn't even think that I would spend the time to follow up with you to get a little more gloss on that, given that the conclusion in the report was that it was consistent with testing on site. The allegation is that there was major clearing of the site. That was the allegation. And there is a major portion of the site that's cleared, and you could see it in the aerial photography. The problem is it happened in 2005, 2006. So fast forward to 2017, when a 40B project's pending, senses are heightened, people are concerned, there's a lot of development in town, the building inspector is doing his job to make sure that he's being vigilant of these things, walks up the site and took photos of the very area that was cleared in 2005, 2006. The photographic record is clear. None of that was addressed in Mr. Garner's report. Andrews Engineering submitted information to the board to that effect. The board has all the information, they need to draw that conclusion, okay? The second half of the port was, the second half of the report was primarily wetlands-related. Mr. O'Hart has been assured, and we have on-the-record statements from the Conservation Commission, which enforces the local bylaw and the state bylaw, that there have been no violations of the Wetlands Protection Act, state or local, as a result of any testing work that was done on the site. Okay? So I was surprised to see a report that, I mean, I shouldn't say surprised, I mean, Mr. Garner is an experienced wetlands expert, so when you hire a wetlands expert, I presumably expect to get wetlands data, which is what we got. But none of that changes the fact that we're talking about allegations that a major portion of the site was cleared. This applicant has been under a stop-work order for seven, going on eight months now, all right? That has limited its ability to do testing that was mandated under its project eligibility letter because of what I would describe as confusion, okay? There's confusion about the extent of clearing. I don't know, Amy, do you have my January 16th letter available? So frankly, when I heard of the allegations initially, and I am involved in a fair amount of highly controversial projects, but when I heard about how Mr. O'Hart's project was subject to a stop-work order, I said, wow, he must have clear-cut the entire site. You've got to be kidding me. So I said, the first thing we need is some photographic evidence of exactly what has happened on the site, what's going on, and what does it look like today? And satellite photography is available in relatively real time, okay? So Mr. O'Hart pulled a satellite photograph that was taken after the alleged clearing, and you can see that the majority of the site canopy is still largely intact. And the only area that shows clearing is the same clearing that was done in 2005, 2006. So Amy, I don't know if you're able to kind of walk through my letter, but this letter was in response to the request for an ALTA plan. And I frankly, I was confused when I saw the request initially, and I'm still a little confused today about why we're talking about an ALTA plan in this context, but...
We're actually, we're actually not talking about an ALTA plan because one was not provided. So I think we'll set a baseline here is we're not talking about an ALTA plan because though your applicant's engineer agreed to provide one, one was not provided. So the Board of Appeals gave Mr. Garner leeway to a new scope. So I do not want to go to an ultra-scan, ultra-survey, because if we do, what I'm going to start with is that you did not provide one, or your applicant did not provide one, I know you were in council at the time, did not provide what he agreed to at the November meeting. And if we want, we can play the tape. He did agree to an ultra-study that he would provide. I asked him, was he capable of such? He said yes. One was not provided. We have not addressed it since. I would prefer not to address it at this point because we're beyond that. I think you said in the beginning, we want to get beyond this and get to the big picture.
I would...
As you said earlier, if you want to go with granules, I don't. I do not want to pick on an ALTA study unless you do. I think we're better off moving beyond that point. And if we want to took the merits of this, I would like, Amy, if you could put up the 2006 canopy picture, that they're saying was all previously disturbed. Do we have that?
Yes, if you could just scroll down, yes, yep.
Is that okay?
It is. I'm trying to resolve confusion, and confusion creates angst, and angst creates allegations that may or may not be confused for violations of the bylaw, okay? I think there's some, there were some statements that Mr. Garner made about lack of information. Let's just, let's, actually, sorry, Amy, could you go towards up the top here? So actually, yeah, there's a date there, 2006. So this is aerial photography from 2006 that is publicly available on Google Earth and a variety of other commercial satellite photography sites. But you can see between 2000, actually, if you scroll further up, you'll see the virgin canopy. But this is 2006. That is clearing. That's a trail that was cut in 2006. There was no allegation of a violation of the bylaw in 2006, all right? That is substantial clearing in that area. You can see that the canopy's missing.
Chris, can you point to us where you're talking about?
So if you see this arrow here...
Yes.
All right. And I don't know, I think, does the board have a copy of my January 16th letter? Because you can see it black and white and in color. But in any event...
Yes, we do.
This is clearing.
Okay, where are you saying that area is?
Well, if you, and we can scroll farther down. You can scroll all the way down, actually, and just keep going. You'll see more clearing. That's the same clearing site, right there, okay? You can keep scrolling down.
Mr. Chairman, would you like the lights down?
No, I can see...
Sorry, just to give a little frame of reference, the green roof there is our horse stables on an abutting property. But again, we're in 2007 now, and you can see that that site was clear. Now, if you keep scrolling down, again, this is now 2010, same area, significant clearing that was described earlier tonight. And I got the impression from what was said that Mr. O'Hart did that. That wasn't the case. If you keep scrolling down, same area, 2013. Seacon Street is the bottom of the photo. That's Stop River Road to the left. Same area, significant clearing, wide open, the canopy's missing, 2015, okay? There's the trail. You can see the trail, all right? Keep going, please. Thank you, Amy. Now, there was some confusion or suggestion that Mr. O'Hart was trying to get a head start on road clearing. We all know about the Stop River Road project up the street. That is what road clearing looks like. That is clearing in preparation for building a road. All right? So keep that in mind when you see the current satellite photo post allegations of major site clearing. Again, same area, significantly missing the canopy in that area going back. This is April of 2017, again, before Mr. O'Hart did any testing on site, all right? This is the current satellite photo, okay? This was taken after August. This is November. We have the date stamped from the Commercial Satellite Photography Company that can be traced to confirm the date. But you'll see the canopy on site is still intact. There is no major clearing that took place, all right? And the only major area of clearing is the same area. If you scroll down, you can see Seacon Street there. It's the same area right here, same area there, that was cleared in 2005, 2006. The remaining site canopy is still in place, okay? Now, if you scroll down farther, we identified where the photo, so Mr. Bullock, exercising all diligence, took photos of what he indicated were of concern. He saw cleared space. He had a concern and he brought it to the town's attention. He's doing his job, okay? So he indicated and took photos at certain locations, and those are the locations of the photo that were taken. The same photos that were identified as violations of the bylaw, okay? It's the same area that was cleared in 2005, 2006, all right? Fast forward to today, Mr. O'Hart went on site in August after receiving his project eligibility letter, after he was told to do testing on site. And after, the rumor in town was that there's ledge all over the entire site, all right? He did testing to determine what he was dealing with up there, as he was directed to do under the project eligibility letter. Okay? So confusion, fear, concerns about a project, the word 40B comes up, clearing in 2005, 2006 that did not constitute a violation suddenly is a violation that has led to eight months of a stop-work order, all right? We want to find a way forward, okay? I think the board has several different paths they can take. I would rely on Mr. Garner's letter. I know there was some testimony tonight that, you know, you were unfamiliar with some of the things that were done, but I think, had we had the opportunity to meet on site directly, you know, maybe we could have explained our photos. I didn't see any discussion of the photos in Mr. Garner's review. I didn't see any discussion about historic clearing. Now, you know, he was charged with doing a certain review and he did his job. Mr. O'Hart's trying to do his job. He's trying to do what he does. And in order to design this, because I know this board is going to ask every question under the sun about this project site. They're going to want to know all the details. They're going to want to know all the soil, all the ledge areas, the wetlands and everything. So for him to get that information, he's got to get up on site and he has to do some testing. So that's what we're trying to do. Now, the board can approach this several ways. I don't even think the board needs to quote-unquote "overrule" its building inspector. I think the board can make a determination that under Chapter 40B, the bylaw in question is not relevant to the Chapter 40B process. It's subsumed within those administrative-type bylaws that are subsumed within the process. And frankly, we can impose a requirement that before Mr. O'Hart does any further work on site, he gives 24-hour notice to Mr. Bullock so that he knows exactly what he's doing, what he's going to do up there, what type of information he's trying to seek. And then, when we're ready to come before this board with a substantive application, we can have that data available to answer all the tough questions that this board's going to ask. So however we find a way forward, I think, you know, I leave it to the board. There are other issues out there with the way this process went from phone call from an abutter to eight months later. I don't even think we need to talk about that stuff. I think we can find a way forward, however the board wants to choose, and, you know, I'm willing to go that route. I think I've, I've, there are several different directions any attorney could have gone with this type of process. And I think, knowing this board, I think this board is going to get to the facts and get to applying the law. And you've had a tough charge the last few years. The town has been dealing with many applications for comprehensive permit projects. So the board's had a tough go at it, and they're doing their best to try to sort through it. And I think this is just another instance where we need to get there.
Okay. I'm going to first give Patrick the opportunity.
Yeah, I'd like to respond, if I may.
Okay.
First, I was not informed that I should try and coordinate with Andrews or the applicant, and so I made no attempt to do so. I don't think that any of the opinions that I have rendered would have been changed particularly if I had met them out on the site. Chris is very persuasive and I appreciate his point of view. I did look at his letter, I did look at the aerial photos. I didn't feel that it was necessary to make any reference to them because I didn't feel that clearing beyond what had occurred eight, 10 years ago had occurred. And I don't say that in my letter. But what I did see and what I did catalog is that the clearing was, in my opinion, and it remains that, probably less than six to nine months old. There may have been areas, the extent of the clearing may have been done 10 years ago, it may have been done in 2005, it may have been done partially in 2015. But I do a huge amount of restoration work, and it's astounding how quickly vegetation comes back in a natural setting. So if those areas that looked like they do today had been cleared four, five, six, 10 years ago, they would have been heavily vegetated today. And they were clearly run over by large-scale machinery in the last half year. That's not to say that the work I observed was more extensive than what had happened. And I never said that. But it was recent work. And I can't respond to the question about whether the Conservation Commission has said that local bylaws have not been violated because the wetlands were not flagged, they were not located, and I don't know if the agent walked the site, what they would have been looking at. The proper procedure is that a wetland scientist goes out, they identify the resource areas, that's then reviewed by the commission, and I don't believe that this happens. And it certainly hasn't been mapped by Andrews, so...
Thank you. Amy, do you have anything from the Conservation Committee stating that Mr. O'Hart has not violated any local or state Wetland Protection Act laws?
I would, I don't think I have anything that states that precisely.
Okay. Okay. Chris, do you have a letter? Do you have a letter from them saying that you do?
Turn it over to Andrews, who was, has been involved throughout the Conservation Commission process. My only statement on that is, if there was a violation, we would have heard it from the CONCOM, they'd be before this board, but I'll let you...
You had said you actually, you had, you actually stated in the affirmative that the CONCOM said there was no local or state violations. You didn't say, to the best of your knowledge, so...
Because Janet, Steve O'Connell from Andrews Survey and Engineering, Janet DeLonga said it at two Conservation Commission hearings. So the tape is available for those where she said that, where it was brought up at Conservation hearings.
Amy, do you have the minutes to those?
I'm sure I have the minutes.
Okay.
I don't know what meetings they were in.
Okay. If you could, do you recall when those were?
In October, early.
October.
Could you provide those to the...
She was directed to visit the site, which she did.
Could you provide those to the board at your earliest convenience? You don't have to do it tonight, obviously.
Okay. So in response to Mr. Garner's latest comment about wetland delineation, the wetlands were, in fact, delineated. The date of the delineation was well before the date of the testing, well before the date of the state eligibility letter, before the application was made to the state. We had a very good handle on the site topography and wetlands at a very early stage. And it was also confirmed during the testing that we were not, again, violating any local wetland bylaws or Wetland Protection Act jurisdictions.
Do you want to, can you address, Amy, can you bring up the photo with the blue, with the blue lines on it?
Yeah, I want to note that I would respectfully disagree.
Okay.
I know that the application that was made to the Conservation Commission was only to affirm state-protected wetlands under the Wetland Protection Act. And as I noted at the very end of my report, right in this section here, Amy, if you scroll up right there, that these are the more extensive wetlands that are protected by the town itself. And I was particularly focusing on the water course under Item C, ephemeral, intermittent, or perennial, and land subject to flooding or inundation. And my photograph showed that. And if, let's go up a little bit, I think that's where that illustration was. No, you have to go down.
With the blue?
Yeah, with the blue, right there. So right here is, I noted, the flagged wetland is here, and it looks relatively accurate. And I didn't focus on the accuracy of this terribly because I know it was appealed and I knew the DEP was going to affirm that. And whatever my opinion was, it didn't matter because the EP's opinion would stand. But there's an ephemeral intermittent stream that flows up here. I measured it at roughly 300 or 400 feet. It's protected by the town. It was not flagged, it was not marked. It's not shown on any of the Andrews mapping. And again, there's a large wetland pocket over in this area. And that's just, that doesn't show the other ones that were up in this area that I illustrated in my photos. So my opinion as a professional wetland scientist is that, at least under the town's bylaw, there are additional wetlands on the site. And I don't know how relevant they are to the development plans. I haven't looked at them in conjunction with road systems and lots and houses and that sort of thing. But to characterize to the board that the wetlands are taken care of, I think is accurate only if the board is going to say the only accurate wetlands that matter are those protected by the state and not the town. To be able to walk up a flowing stream for close to 400 feet that's not shown on any mapping and yet is protected by the town, I find breathtaking.
Okay. Do you have any comments at this time?
The only comment I have is, you know, in the photos, you can see the leaves on the trees that are down around the area that, and there was probably a clearing there, but the clearing was made a little bit bigger. I don't think you're going to actually see those in the overheads. But the pictures that I have shows the trees that were taken down, you know, along the sides of the gravelled areas, and they still have the leaves on them. So I wouldn't think they would still be on there if it was done 10 years ago, you know? So that's all.
Okay. Any questions from the board for anybody?
I have a question for Chris. You keep saying the majority of the clearing was performed at an earlier date. Do you have a figure percentage on what that number is?
No, so I think there was trail widening, as indicated. Okay, so the trail was widened by two feet here, two feet there. The major clearing is that part that was identified as the violation. So I think Andrews did, I think the Andrews engineering plans show what it was able to do based on its pre and current survey work as far as what was the extent of the increase. I think, you know, in some areas, there was an indication that it was two feet or a foot. But there's no percentage. I mean, do you have a number on that?
Percentage-wise, no. The plans that we submitted at this board's request showed existing trails with black and white ink, and then we had some red... and white ink, and then we had some red dash lines that showed the new trails, and those were located by survey, there were, also topography was, was acquired to show, that was at your specific request, Devin, about maybe it would help illustrate, you know, excessive or extensive cuts and fills, which in our opinion, it clearly shows there were.
So I guess part of my question is, how can you affirm that it's the majority when you do not have a number associated with how much was actually cleared and how much was existing prior?
Right. So my focus was on the allegation that was made, and the allegation that was made said a major portion of the site was cleared without a percentage, without specificity. So, and it also identified that specific area that was subject to the historic clearing. So I only addressed, in what I told you, that specific area that was cleared, being the same area that's shown on the current photograph. So I leave it to you to interpret the photograph, and to the extent the Andrews survey shows you the extent of broader work on the site, then, you know, I think there are other reasons why that shouldn't necessarily be a determination even be made. I think we can move on in other ways, but if you're looking to make a determination, the determination is whether the allegation of a major portion of the site is cleared by Mr. O'Hart. That's, that's the allegation I was addressing.
So a major portion of the site, the definition, I don't want to speak for you, but is the definition to you not necessarily an extended length of 20 feet, but one certain area?
It's a lot more than what is shown in the photographic record. That's what I would present to the board, all right? To allege that a major area of the site was cleared, you would need to have a photograph showing a significant portion or a noticeable portion of the canopy cleared. Now, if there was a tree that got taken down in terms of getting equipment to a different area, there are trees, you know, that Mr. Bullock pointed out still had leaves on them, but again, going back to, are we really pursuing the developer to the point where the allegation is a major portion of the site was cleared, and the portion where the photos were taken is the same area that is shown as cleared in the past? So I don't have numbers on it. I, I'm sorry, I don't. Andrews gave as accurate of a figure as it could as far as pre and post, but the conclusion regarding a major portion of the site, that's where I have a problem.
So to you, length of clearing doesn't matter, it's width of clearing that matters?
General extent of clearing.
But wouldn't the, wouldn't the general extent of clearing not be limited to just one area of a certain width and apply to a whole length of clearing?
So if the, so you're saying if the entire trail system were widened by a foot here or two feet there, that would be of concern?
I'm just trying to understand that what you said, it just, I just would like some facts based on that.
I, I'm confident that the photographic record is what a fact-finder would apply to the allegation of a major portion of the site being cleared. That's, that's the standard that I think, I would suggest the board look at is the photographic record. That's the fact. Picture's worth a thousand words.
But I think, I think, Chris, that, you know, yes, Mr. Bullock used a major portion of property. He didn't say the property, he said of property, and he clearly identified D1A1, which clearly says for non-residential uses, comma, land clearing, excavation, filling, not allowed. We've heard tonight testimony, and we've heard in the past, that in order to do deep well testing, that there are machines out there that do this, that traverse the car paths. There is no need for what was done here. We heard that you were going to bring a water truck in, that's why it was done. Everyone you talk to who's an expert in this field says you take your front-end loader and you put two buckets in it because you can only do one test site at a time. We heard that it was due to ledge. This is why we did it. This is before you took over. We know that since we don't have final grades, we're going to end up using a drill to do final ledge, or to find ledge, we're not going to be using a backhoe since we don't know our grades. Now, you said you want to move beyond, and I agree, but to be perfectly frank from my perspective, moving on would have been back on August 21, when the builder inspector said you violated D1A1. The applicant had the perfect opportunity to say, yes, I did, tell me what needs to be done, and we would all have moved on. It was not because of the town that this hearing is ongoing, it is because of an appeal to something that appears to be very simple on face value, that there was clearing done. And whether you're not, you want to say it's two feet, I mean, we have testimony the day of our walkthrough that you were not present at, and Mr. O'Hart can, I think, affirm it, is that he agreed that the first picture brought up by Mr., by Patrick Garner was, yes, they did, they opened that area up. And I know shaking his head now, but they agreed to that. We've heard multiple stories, and yes, this board is willing to get beyond it. We have to get beyond it. We're not at the 40B yet, we want to get there, we want you to be able to do your testing so we can hear your 40B, but I think to put the onus on this board and on the town, you know, your applicant could have very easily on the 21st of August admitted guilt to what he did, asked what was required beyond what Mr. Bullock told him at that time, and none of us would be here tonight.
I received a phone call at one point suggesting that the town was looking for tens of thousands of dollars in fine money. Mr. O'Hart has spent tens of thousands of dollars answering these allegations, okay? Yes, he was not neat on site in certain areas, all right? Trees got cut down, he widened some trails, and he immediately stopped work in response to a stop-work order. He immediately, my understanding, and please correct me if I'm mistaken, did what was asked of him as far as remediate, immediate remedial work, okay? But then there were allegations that there was going to be some sort of punitive financial penalty, okay, and that he was going to be liable for tens of thousands of dollars, okay? There are issues with that as well that I don't even think we need to get into about how the fine was alleged and whether or not it can be assessed, but the applicant, you know, this is the beginning of a long process, and I wasn't representing the applicant at the time, maybe I would have done it differently, okay? Maybe I would have walked him up here and tarred and feted him for, for, you know, taking additional trees than he should have taken, all right? But where there was, there has to be a finding of some confusion here because the pictures of the allegation of major clearing are pictures of an area that were previously cleared, which in a, in a hot-button 40B project is going to lead, it's going to snowball from there. It's going to happen, and I don't fault anyone for that, all right? But I get back to, I would like to find a way beyond it, but it's not going to involve, you know, the payment of money. I think Mr. O'Hart has suggested that 24 hours advance notice, he will be under the gun going forward as far as, I mean, he's going to have to tiptoe around the site, all right? But I think the board has the information that would allow it to go forward, the law allows the board to go forward, there are any number of ways we can move forward. I asked, you know, the chair and the board, what do you see, what direction do you see us going in here?
That will be, that will be for the board to discuss during deliberations, okay? I'm just one party to it. I gave my opinion, okay? So I think what I'd like to do is, we're going to, as you know, during the appeal process, we can hear from the public as long as they have factual information they want to add to the hearing. So unless you have anything else, or anybody else does, I'd like to open it up to the public.
I may have some comments about whatever procedure the board is inclined to apply tonight before the board decides to deliberate, just so that the board understands, you know, what options they may have. But certainly, we can hear from any other interested parties as to, you know, what information they might be looking.
You're welcome to give us your thoughts. One of the reasons why we have Attorney DeLuca here this evening. Patrick, continue with any more. Anybody in the audience have anything to add to the facts of this case? Lorraine Sweeney?
Lorraine Sweeney, 14 Stop River Road. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I've been in a butter to this property for 23 years, and I appreciate that this evening they presented aerial photos that probably were taken 2005, 2006. What I can testify to this evening is that for 18, 19 years of the 23 years I lived there, I've walked every inch of this property. We used to walk our dogs there for close to 20 years until Mr. O'Hart became the owner of the property. During that time, I was very familiar with all the trails that went through there, and none of the trails looked anything like what's been cleared and what they look like today. I'm not refuting that the aerial is on, but I can testify that nothing was like that. They were cart paths, they were wide enough for horses, wide enough for dogs, but they were not cleared by any equipment or anything. They really were, for the most part, just people used them on a regular basis. Kids even sometimes rode dirt bikes through there. That's what they were used for. I also was and participated in the Conservation Commission hearing that related to the abbreviated notice of resource area delineation for the property. I ended up filing an appeal to DEP related to that because I was concerned with the way some of the information went in, and related to that, I can say, because I participated in that hearing, that the board definitively did not address the local wetland bylaw there. Janet DeLonga told me when they issued the final order of resource area delineation, they were specific and very clear that there was a single resource area the applicant requested that the board review, and it's clearly defined by, I forget what the wetland flag numbers are, but it was a single resource area. When we were out then, in February of this year with DEP, I participated in the site walk with DEP. Mr. O'Hart and Steve O'Connell were both there. I asked the question again, was the only wetlands area reviewed, this one area? And Steve explained to me because it was a 40B, they didn't look at the local wetlands. I then said, it's my understanding that there are also no other state wetlands on the property that you asked the board to review. Steve said this is the only state wetlands, but there was confusion, according to Janet DeLonga, regarding whether or not there may be other state wetlands, and DEP said, well, it doesn't matter, we're going to take a look at it, and if there are other areas regulated by the state, we'll identify that when we go back out on the site later this spring. So I'm not concerned about that, but it was very, very clear that the local wetlands were not looked at as part of the process. Additionally, when the plan was filed with the Conservation Commission, which I believe it was in August of this past year, the plan does not show the construction road that was put in. So even the existing conditions plans themselves with, that were filed with the Conservation Commission, that they based their vote on, did not show the construction road. It was probably put together very quickly using some old topography, but nevertheless, for the board, who never walked the site, meaning the Conservation Commission, excuse me, it was confusing because there was no road there. When they were reviewing it, they just assumed that the plans being presented were accurate. So there's a number of things that I think you'll have to check yourselves, but I believe the record will reflect exactly what I'm saying here.
Okay. Thank you.
Chris?
Somebody?
I had a question.
Go ahead.
What was used on the site to, I don't want to say clear at this point, but what was made to, I guess, widen the car paths?
Mr. O'Hart rented a small excavator, and only.
It was on tracks.
Small track excavator. I don't know the, it was a Caterpillar, I don't recall the.
Tree tent?
Yeah, small.
Maybe four ton?
You know.
About 14 foot taken.
I'd classify it as probably the smallest excavator you would, you know, other than, what would they classify as a mini excavator? This would be the smallest of the large excavator class that you can readily rent.
And when you were widening the paths, you used the excavator as well to kind of smooth those out?
Yeah. Right.
We were under the impression that there was an incredible amount of ledge on the site, so, and I had conversations with certain members of town officials who had told me they had looked at the property to purchase it and that backed out because of the extensive ledge. So after we had gotten the letter of eligibility from Mass House, and we wanted to determine how extensive the ledge was, that was our.
There was another comment in the back, or another question? Go ahead, Dr. Anderson.
Dr. Carpenter, 120 Seacong Street. Just, I'm glad you asked that question because I was about to ask it myself. I walked back there one day myself and Mr. Clark, and the excavator that was being used by O'Hart would not be what I would call a small excavator. It was as much a large one as I've seen outside of a major building in, in a major city. It was a big excavator that was in there on tracks, and he was digging a hole that you could have put this room into. So it was a, it was a major excavator, and he was taking down major trees to move this thing through the, through the woods.
Thank you, Dr. Carpenter.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Could we get a receipt from the rental, from the applicant, as, so we can get an idea of, I'm hearing that it's a small excavator, I'm hearing it's a big excavator, or some way that we could, if that's considered pertinent to this?
If you'd like it, I don't know if it's pertinent or not. I mean, I think, I think we've heard that the site was, there has been a disturbance done. If it was done by a big machine, little machine, I don't know if that, if that weighs in. If you'd like it, we can certainly request it for deliberations, sure. Would you be able to provide that?
May I make a quick comment?
Absolutely. Would you be able to provide that? Then Pat will let you, you'll be able to provide that?
I would be, but I.
My understanding, my understanding was it was a CAT 7300, which was, we were told on the walkthrough tonight, no one remembers what kind of machine it was, but if I remember, I heard it was a CAT 7300, which would be a rather large machine, but if you can provide a receipt, that's great, and we'll, we'll add it into the testimony. If we close the public hearing tonight, we'll add it into his testimony, just as long as it comes in the next day or so, if that's all right?
Let me quickly comment. I'm going to sort of side with Chris's side over here. Having done just hundreds and hundreds of holes, when you're going out to do these, you want the biggest machine you can. I mean, that's just all there is to it. They operate quickly, they dig easily, if they hit boulders under the, you know, under the surface, they dig them out fast. You don't want a half, half-sized machine. You don't want to get in there with the smallest little thing you can get. I'm always thrilled when my client comes in with a major machine. Big machines don't mean destruction, though. They don't mean that, you know, the paths have to be widened dramatically and that sort of thing. They just mean that you're going to be very efficient. So I'm not sure that machine size is necessarily relevant, and the board may be, you know, wandering on a tangent. If people saw a huge machine in there, my reaction is great, but that still doesn't explain the clearing we're talking about having taken place, but the machine size itself is not.
Sure.
I have another question from Stuart.
Sure.
Okay. Can we go to the, Amy, can you go to the thing that shows where the, where the roadway? It's not a picture.
Yeah, what do we? So not in Patrick's?
I guess not, no.
Was it something we already saw tonight, though?
Excuse me?
Something we already saw tonight?
Yeah, we did see it briefly. Where the road comes in from, from Seacong, and then it makes a right-hand turn, and then it goes down. I think that might show it there, yes, okay. So where it says photo four and five, because I personally took a photo that was, was put into the record when we had our first, first hearing, and there was a large area that was, that was excavated, and then as you take and look at that red dotted line, which I assume is the roadway, and, and, or the accessway, okay? And there was an area from about where the arrow of photo four, five, if you go just a little, little bit further, and then there's an area that, as it was going down there, that was significantly filled or app. that was significantly filled, or appeared to be significantly filled. I'm not a contractor. And I, I remember asking Mr. O'Hart, and he said that they did have to fill that area in order to access it further. And you didn't comment at all on that, and I'm just curious-
I didn't see any areas destructed, it was being significantly filled. I think what you're talking about is right here?
A little bit to the right, going down the hill, right in there, yes, sir. Ryan Black.
Yeah, I, I don't, don't know. It certainly didn't strike me as anything, you know.
One minute back, sure. Just take a microphone, state your name, please.
Mr. Chair, my name is Deborah Gershia, and I live directly across the street from the property. My husband Jim and I own the property located at 143 Seccong Street. What happened was, a lot of this excavation work was done in the summertime, when the sun's out, for at least twelve, thirteen hour period of time. So my husband and I observed the equipment going in when it was daylight and equipment coming out, but it was this duration of the activity that took place. Like, we would leave for work in the morning, work a full business day, and come home, and the excavation work was still going on. So my husband Jim and I bought the property across the street where we're located in the fall of 2013, and as Mrs. Sweeney indicated, it was basically a cart path as an abutted Seccong street. So then all of a sudden, in the summer of 2017, major, large excavation equipment goes in, and the property begins to be flattened out near the front where it abuts Seccong street to make room for a parking lot for interested parties who appear to be people who would be buying houses up the road there. So we noticed, my husband Jim and I, that there was actually deep excavation into the existing soil, and we saw basically clear cutting going on of the first maybe fifty feet to a hundred feet that abutted Seccong street, and never existed before. As Mrs. Sweeney indicated, it was just a gentle car path. So what caused us to be concerned was, it appeared that there was major work going on before the actual permits were filed and approved, and this is what created all the tension in the neighborhood. Because we're saying that, you know, my husband and I just applied for a building permit to remodel our bathroom with Mr. Bullock, which Mr. Bullock executed and approved, and as taxpayers, we're concerned, how come there's a double standard in Norfolk? And that's what all the residents became concerned about, that appeared that Mr. O'Hart was getting started with major excavation before the permits were actually filed and approved.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Chris, I'll give it back to you. You said you had some questions for the board before we-
Well, I, I just wanted to reiterate that I, I think my goal is to obviously find a way for the applicant to move forward. I think the board at this point, after all the time that's passed, I, I would like to think is looking to find a conclusion here. So I, at the outset, tried to indicate there are a couple different ways to move forward. This process was commenced before I became counsel for the applicant. So there is a traditional appeal of the decision of the building inspector pending that prior counsel filed. As I had indicated, if the board wants another option, it could establish a procedure for the applicant to continue with testing on the site and essentially determine that under chapter 40B, D1A1 is replaced by this procedure for this particular applicant. It would provide some certainty, it would allow the board to obviate the need to see through with, you know, any sort of affirmative action one way or the other relative to whatever action it was that Mr. Bullock took, and it would give us a path forward. I think, I wanted just to explain that option to the board. I think there are other procedural issues that are baked into Mr. Bullock's letter regarding, you know, whether or not there's any fine, or whether or not any action needs to be taken at this point, because we've stopped work, we haven't worked in eight months, and, you know, procedurally, any, any idea of a fine wouldn't be applicable in this instance, just given the way the bylaws written and the way the law works under chapter forty, section 21. So the board has options, you know, if the board would choose to take them, but obviously it's up to the board however it wants to proceed.
Okay. Thank you. Attorney DeLuca.
Well, this is, you know, the opportunity for the zoning board of appeal to hear of an appeal of an applicant to a decision made by your zoning enforcement officer. Section 14 of chapter 40A sort of gives the authority to board to exercise a power on granting, in this section, a board of appeals may, in conformity with the provisions of this chapter, make orders or decisions, reverse or affirm in part, or in whole or in part, or modify any order or decision. To that end, shall have the power of the officer for whom the appeal is taken. So in other words, you have the opportunity to, to either affirm without anything further, to deny the appeal without anything further, or to modify. Taking all the, into consideration all the testimony you've heard tonight, if and when you close the hearing, you can make a decision of that sort. And I just wanted to comment in general that it is true that a 40B will overcome a lot of the local regulations. But I, I don't take it as, as a fact at the moment that, that in, in the absence of a, of a formal application before you, that that is in fact in play. I think you're, you're correct in your assumption that the local bylaws are still controlling the site at this time.
Lorraine, I'll let you go first, and then I can tell Chris once to get the last word. No? Okay. Go ahead, Lorraine.
Sure.
Chris, you're welcome.
No, no, after you.
Just because I'm concerned you may close the hearing tonight, and because this plan is up, I'd like to just speak to this, if I may, real quickly, before it closes. In this area here where the roadway went in, one of the reasons I was concerned, as far as the Conservation Commission's review was concerned, is that the extent of the single resource area, which I understand they looked at and nothing else, only extended to here, and back maybe a decade ago, it extended all the way to here. That was one of the problems with developing this site. I remember that because I sat on this board at that time. I was on the board for ten years. The wetlands extended up here, the buffer area came right into what's now like the Dela Camara's property. I was alarmed when I looked at the filing, because again, what went in front of the Conservation Commission, there was no such cart path, no such road, there was just this shown, and then the existing topography that was probably taken from earlier surveys. It, it caused me to just question it, and that's when I started looking into it, and again, some of what now Patrick has characterized as local wetlands, not state wetlands, may be the reason, but my gut is, and that's, you know, that's all it is, an opinion, but that this was wet before this went in, and now it's been forever changed. And I'm thinking the only way we're going to prove that there was ever a hydrologic connection here is we're going to have to do soil testing on the abutters properties to confirm that. But I do think it's an issue that this roadway went in and cut off what had been the reason under an earlier application that you couldn't get through here.
Will the, will the DEP study be looking at that? The one that-
They, they're looking at it from the State Wetlands Protection Act, definition only. They will not look at the local. I just wanted to add that, that's all.
If I may?
Yes.
This is a different sort of mapping of the same area that I had shown. My map had twisted, but I had the, the stream coming up into this area. It actually winds up right up through here and stops abruptly where this new trail comes in, and the wetland that I had shown is really right here. It's still there, it's, it's intact, it's a fairly significant freshwater wetland. And when I was on the trail, I spent a fair amount of time trying to see, I'm echoing her, her phrase, but I was trying to see whether there was a hydrologic connection from here to here. It was hard to know because the trail had been, had been created. I think this is the time of year to do it, because it's springtime and we'd be able to see flow, but the, the issues are ones that I would confirm. If, if this area that now would be a locally protected wetland had once had a hydrologic connection into this, it would become what's called BVW, or bordering vegetated wetlands, and it would be protected by the state. The stream wouldn't be, but this pocket would be in, in additional area of BVW. So I'm not sure it's zoning board stuff, you know, it's conservation, but the, the issues are real.
Yeah. Thank you. Chris, any com, any question?
None other than, you know, I respectfully disagree with Mr. DeLuca's take on the applicability of the bylaw. I, I think a example of that is, we've been talking a lot about wetlands tonight. If Mr. DeLuca's take were correct, then the Conservation Commission would be hearing all of this information before the local Conservation Commission on a violation of the local wetlands bylaw. That's not happening. So we can't have it both ways. I'd refer you to the Amesbury decision regarding the basket of procedural and administrative bylaws that are tucked into the 40B process from the outset, as far as the application process and, and how that process works.
Okay. I will entertain, unless the board so chooses, a, a motion to close this public hearing on this appeal. If the board feels we need to look further, we can certainly keep the hearing open. I think this has been a long, exhausting eight months, and as I'll echo what I said earlier, it was not the board that created this. It was the applicant. This could have been solved very easily eight months ago. It was not, because we went from whether D1A1 was really a law that could be applied to this property, to that D1A1 was a law for non-residential property. We heard all a slew, as I stated earlier, buckets, water trucks, Steve's truck, all that could have been resolved. And, you know, I am, I'm not apologetic to the applicant for his legal costs or the fees for a peer review, because this was brought on because someone didn't want to just step up to the plate and say, I, I broke your bylaw, and allow the process to go further. The 40B process, the conservation process, that wasn't done. So I don't have any sympathy. This was brought on. And so, and I'm sorry it went this way. I think it's been a, I'm sure Mr. O'Hart can spend his funds in a great, better manner as we get closer to a 40B. We look forward to hearing this 40B and, and its merits. But I, I don't think it's, I think, as I back owed, it was not the board that brought this on, and it could have been solved a long time ago. So with the, at the purview of the board, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion that we close this public hearing for the appeal of the building inspector's stop work order decision for 144 Seccong Street.
Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Do I have any discussion? We will, we will not deliberate this this evening, but I would like to, I would like to deliberate this on the April 12th, which is next Thursday, is that right?
Uh, yes.
Again, I'm sorry, I, I won't be here.
You won't be here Thursday?
No, I won't, no.
I thought it was Tuesday you weren't here.
I'm sorry, no, I'm leaving Tuesday, 10th, I'll be back the following Monday, marathon Monday.
But Devin has been here for all these, um-
Do we need to vote on the motion?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we do, we do, we haven't done that yet, but that's, I'm just talking about the deliberation, but, all right, so do we, okay, so we have the motion on table, we have a second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Okay. So, public hearing is closed, we will deliberate this on April 12th, and I think we have one at seven, 7:15, we'll deliberate this at 7:30. Okay?
I cannot make that, and I don't think the applicant would need to be here. I think the record is, is clear. I'd just be curious as to where the board comes out as far as the procedures that it intends to apply to get to a point where we can move forward, and-
Absolutely.
We'll see where that goes.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to take a five-minute recess and then reconvene the board at, it's 9:30. So, can we have a five-minute recess? Thank you.
[inaudible]
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 Welcome, welcome back to the zoning board of appeals of April 4th. At this time, and, and I apologize to the abutters, you guys have been great. It is 9:35. 123 Seccong Street is going to require a great deal of deliberation. Our vice chairman, Mike Caliza, had to go to New York on business unexpectedly, actually had to fly out this afternoon. I just think, we want to do the right thing. We want to review all the facts. So, we are going to hold off and deliberate that next Thursday evening. So, we're already deliberating 82 North Street. We're going to deliberate 123 Seccong Street, and hopefully, we will also be deliberating 144 Seccong Street. But we are going to do that next Thursday. So, I apologize. We were going to try to get to it tonight. I didn't know how long 144 would take, so I didn't want to earlier mention that it may not happen. But, so I do appreciate your patience. We hope you can join us next Thursday. We like to have an audience. And thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Could I have a motion to close the zoning board of appeals meeting for April 4th at 9:35?
I make a motion, Chris, to close the zoning board of appeals meeting.
Chris.
April 4th.
Did we vote to, or do we have, have to vote to continue the deliberations for 123?
No, we don't have to, because we haven't started the deliberation yet, so we don't have to vote.
We just simply reschedule.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion?
Yes.
Right, a second.
Any, any discussion? Okay, the only thing I would like to do is, I will present to all the members, these are the facts that I saw with regard to 123 Seccong Street from our last meeting. I just don't want time to, time to lose the, lose the thought. So, these are some facts just to review before our meeting next week.
Thank you.
And again, they're not in any real, they're not in any format. They're just basically bullet points of the facts. I don't think I gave the second page to a couple of people, so, I think over here, you don't have a second page. But again, they're just a rough-
Hmm?
Yeah, okay. Amy as well.
Amy, what's the page?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay. Okay, just so you guys can have a chance to review them. Okay. All those, like, have a, okay, all those in favor of closing the zoning board meeting?
Yeah, we have the second, so let's see.
Yep, we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate.